Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Ashburnham Planning Board Meeting of January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'd like to call the order, meeting to order at six-thirty. Attendance, roll call attendance of members. Larry Boudreau.
Here.
Lindsey Butler.
Yes.
Steve Coswell. Steve's not on yet. I know he's trying to get on. Richard Wright.
Here.
Here, and Associate Member Roger Hoyt.
Here.
Okay, notifications, agenda is posted on the town website and includes times reasonably anticipated by the chairman forty-eight hours prior to the meeting. Votes may be taken. Order and exact times of the agenda items may vary at the board's discretion, except for public hearings, which cannot start prior to the scheduled time. Documents submitted for review can be found under the Planning Board tab on the town website. I don't believe we have any documents for review today. The meeting is being recorded. The recorded minutes will be the official record, but written minutes will be prepared for easier reference to the topics covered and the actions taken. If you are joining the meeting remotely, which everybody is, please keep your microphone on mute unless you have been invited by the chairman to speak. When the floor is open for public comment, please raise your hand using the feature provided in Zoom and wait until you are recognized by the chairman to speak. With that said, we still don't have Steve Coswell. Steve, I'm gonna check my my text messages to see that he's not trying to text me because I know he's always trying to get on. Steve, are you on? Steve Coswell? I'm not sure. Okay. Maybe I'm mute. Okay. Anyway, let's move on with the meeting. Chairman and Vice Chairman comments. I have only to mention that there's no word yet on how meetings in February will be held, whether they'll be held remotely or not. So I have no word on that. Hold on a second. Hi, Steve. You have to, it should be, if you go into meetings. Live meetings and boards, if you go to the top thing line is Planning Board and you go over to Agenda and and click the Agenda. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thanks. Steve's still trying to get on. Okay, so first up on the hearings and applications is the Lake Haven Private Road. Mr. Ben Grazzi is on and invited to unmute and tell us how your plan has been progressing and what you have to present to us.
Perfect. Thank you. Thanks very much. I can start with a very brief written proposal that I put together. I'll go ahead and share my screen.
Okay.
Can everyone see improvement proposal for Lake Haven Lane?
Yes, I can.
Great. I'll just walk through this real, real quick. The, the first item is the, the road width as part of our proposal. Road averages fourteen to sixteen feet in width along most of the way, sometimes opening up to eighteen feet in several spots to allow for passing opportunities. See drawing. I I do have a drawing here. We'll jump to in a minute to be easier than switching my screen each time. We would request an exception be granted for the minimum width requirement under the premise that vehicular traffic on this private right-of-way, given the very low usage. Other than our proposed house, this way is only used by other property owners and their guests to access their camps, mostly during the summer months, mostly on the weekends. And I, the drawing I have. Let's see if I can share that. I wonder if it won't allow me to share.
Oh, you don't have to share it separately. You have to just bring it up on your screen.
Can you guys see the drawing here?
No, no, it has to be. Do you have more than one screen?
Yeah.
You have to bring it over to the screen that you're showing this one on.
Okay, did that work?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great.
You might have to make it a little smaller so we can see it because it's kind of getting cut off, yeah.
Okay, I can, I can, first I'll show you the first, you know, this is the whole plan. What I wanted to show you, and I apologize for the lightness of it, this is just after I highlighted and then scanned, so. This is the whole length of the road. I'm happy to zoom in and show you, but in these highlighted areas in yellow, hopefully everyone can see that there's down here near where it connects to Farren. And this first corner in front of the Denofrio property. Then again, here in front of the ACT property, and also there's a cart path that comes in from the opposite side of the road. It opens up in both of those places there. Then it narrows back down for this corner to, to roughly the fourteen-foot width. And then pretty much in front of all these camps here, and again, I'd like to give you guys a better look. In front of these camps here, each of the access points and, and opposite their driveways, so to speak, it, it opens up. So we have sixteen, oh, sorry, eighteen feet that opens up this whole way here. Then this lot here, then it goes back in front of my, the neighbor lot. I'm, we're lot thirty-one here noted. Opens up at our, at our spot too and across from us. And then as you approach the cul-de-sac, it opens up again. And then you'll notice in pink here, I'll just show it now while we're on the drawing. Apologize again, my highlighter didn't do a very good job, but this lower corner of the cul-de-sac, if you will, is that is, is lowest. And our proposal will bring that up to grade and level off this area to kind of make it match most of the rest of the cul-de-sac.
Now, how does the property lines work in your area? Does, does everybody own to the middle of the road or is the road?
It's, it's a really good question. Technically, we, there's a forty-foot right-of-way that is deeded. So each property owns twenty feet into this right-of-way.
Okay.
However, the existing roadway is not forty feet wide. It's less than that. So happens in reality, and I have a drawing I can share if you'd like. The road, the physical roadway that exists now actually kind of ping-pongs within that forty feet or, or pinballs, I should say, kind of within that forty feet. It kind of moves to one side, then it comes to the center, then it goes to the other side. So the sixteen, eighteen feet that, that is the, you know, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen feet that, that the roadway actually is moves around within that forty-foot right-of-way. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
How, how does it work at the cul-de-sac? Is that clear? Is that, how wide is the cul-de-sac?
The right-of-way on the cul-de-sac, I want to say, is a hundred and sixty feet in diameter, which is kind of what we're looking at here. Then the actual cul-de-sac is a little bit smaller than that. It's not, it's, it's probably a hundred feet across.
Okay, and it's, I mean, I, I did talk with our, our town council on this and it's not really for us, it's not really in our purview. If you're gonna do work, you have to have a turnaround. But if you're gonna do work on that turnaround, as I mentioned in my, my email to you, you know, that has, you have to work that out with your neighbors to make sure if you're working on their property and they contest the easement or whatever, that's, that's really for you to work around. But from our standpoint, all we need to know at the time your building permit is granted is that there, there is a functioning cul-de-sac that all of our that all of our town departments that use, that need access to that road agree is adequate turnaround, namely Fire Police, DPW. So, yeah, so that's, that's good. Okay.
Great, yes. And I, and I noted in our message offline that I had my last meeting with the last private owner, a property owner this weekend, and we actually wrote something up between us, so that we put it on paper and we both agreed to it.
Good. That's to protect you. That's good.
Great. And let me go back to the proposal. I'll go to number, and are there any questions on number one? So we are asking for the except, so the exception that we're noting that you said that's what we need to do is define our exceptions. We would request an exception be granted for the minimum width requirement, which is eighteen feet for a gravel surface road. And we have that in all of those yellow sections, but it, it does get narrower than that in other sections.
And, and two, for the benefit of my colleagues on the board, town council did confirm that these are in rules and regulations, which means they're only guidance, guidance for us. We have some discretion there as long as we feel that, and have agreement from other town departments that access is achievable and that it functions as a road. And that's not uncommon with a lot of these carriage and cart roads in an old town like this to have situations like this. Okay.
Thank you.
We can move on.
Number two, verify with DPW the culverts are functioning properly and commit to maintain as necessary. So I've had a conversation with Randy Williams and he understands, we, we didn't, he at the time that I spoke with him, he hadn't yet circled back with the town to understand what is like, the way he explained it to me was his specific responsibility in terms of communicating to me. And but I, what I did do is I grabbed a picture of the culvert. And, and I wanted to show the double culvert. Hopefully people can see this. So when you, the roadway is in the, when you stand in the road, you're in the upper left-hand corner of this picture. You're, you're above. I actually climbed down to take a picture back towards the roadway, because when you stand up on the roadway, you see this green pipe sticking out, and that's what he said, and he saw all the water flowing here and said, oh, it looks like the, the culvert is undermined. When I came to do the work to repair it, I found that it's actually a second culvert. It's just shorter and all of the water is essentially flowing through that one. It works, it's working great, actually. And I, I don't know if you can tell from the picture, but that's flowing right there. I know it's not a video. So I'll, I'm happy to walk with him on that and verify that the road is not being undermined, that it, that it's going through a culvert, it's functioning properly. And this occurs in two places on the road that he noted specifically.
Okay.
So I wanted to show that. Any questions on the culvert? From anyone?
Not by me, any of my other fellow members? Nope.
Not for me.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So number three comes to the cul-de-sac. We're gonna add material to the cul-de-sac approach to improve the grade to meet the eight percent maximum requirement. Right now, in the map, the last say twenty-five to forty feet, let's say, before you get to the cul-de-sac, there's a bit of a, an incline there to get up into that cul-de-sac. We're gonna bring in material. I've, I've actually got a, I should have prepared it better. I will actually I'll bring the, while I'm speaking, I'll bring up the document I scanned in. See if I can just bring it up real quick. I have my contractor, he's giving me the on his letterhead, actually, let's go to share. Do this. So this is from Glenn Hines out of Westminster. He's the, the contractor that's been doing the site work for me. And he writes up this proposal. He's going to increase the grade at the end of Lake Haven Lane and construct a minimum area that will be graded to within the, the two-foot limit across the seventy-five feet. We, we're gonna bring it in more than what, what the what the requirement is. So just to make sure that, that the, the trucks have plenty of room to turn around. And then the regrade the road that leads into the cul-de-sac to get it to that eight percent means it can't raise more than eight feet over a hundred, we'll be able to make that work out, no problem.
Okay.
We only have to go about six feet. So we just want to add a little bit more to ease the grade in. All right. And then, as I mentioned, in the pink area, we're gonna raise that lower quarter and just level off with and to get within the grade requirement that's called out in the rules and regulations. And then four is, is an ongoing one. We're gonna dress the top of the road surface with, with the gravel. And we're gonna recreate a crown that's been kind of lacking in the past couple of years. And we're gonna cover up any significantly protruding rocks and cover over the culvert pipes that are, are existing. There's really only one that's kind of close that we're gonna just put up about six inches of gravel over that.
Okay.
Just normal maintenance and that, that we plan to, to do ongoing. So those would be the, that's the proposal that I have. The trucks are up there. I have images. We've already put some of the trap rock to recreate some structural base. And really, we're just working around the weather at this point to bringing in loads of material.
Okay, good. All right, to my colleagues, the, the process is, is that we can entertain a motion. And the motion would be, you know, subject to his performance of these things. And I would ask you, if you could, John, to send, you know, copies of what you've just showed us, to us. If you send it to the Planning Board account, we'll all get it. And with that, you know, we'll write it, you know, a letter of determination that we can essentially give to the Building Commissioner. You know, subject to this work being done, we, you know, and to the satisfaction of, in, in this case, I would recommend the DPW Director and the Building Commissioner that this work has been done that, you know, we would therefore view the lot as having the adequate frontage that it needs on, on an accessible road. So with that as sort of a very clumsy but motion, I would entertain that. I would make that motion and ask to be seconded and then we can discuss it. Okay, so we have a second. The, I hope so. Hold on a second. I gotta admit two people here. All right. So I have a, a motion and second. Is there any discussion? I'm gonna just go around. Larry, do you have any questions?
No, is, so the, the number four says ongoing. So I'm assuming you don't plan on getting that done before you want to start the project, correct?
All of these will be completed before any construction begins. By ongoing is we will maintain the road surface.
Okay, great. No, that's great. Sounds good. I'm, I'm happy with all, everything.
And, and I can say to the, according to Town Council, our responsibility in this matter ends once he's granted the building permit and, and the road is deemed accessible. He, going forward, his responsibility and his, and his neighbors' responsibility is to keep the road in adequate shape. And they would hold the liability if they allowed the road to get washed out, and then there was an emergency and we couldn't get to it. So because it is a private road, so that's how.
We have this here, commit to maintain as necessary. That's one thing that Randy shared is, we just, you know, as if culverts begin to break down over time, that you would repair them as necessary. So that's what.
Right. And you gotta keep in mind, as I said in my note, that, you know, often when there's water flowing along the road, particularly down there, because there's conservation land down there, there could be Conservation Commission issues. And so you just want to make sure you're, you've got that body on board, but that's not our purview. Okay, Lindsey, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I do not.
Okay, is Steve on? Doesn't appear that Steve's been able to get on. He's had some trouble. So Steve is not present. Richard, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think he's doing a great job.
Good. And just because I like him so much, I'd like to hear if Roger has any thoughts or comments that he could share. Roger?
Have to unmute myself. No, I, that looks, sounds fine to me. Yeah.
Thank you. So I have a motion and a second. Let's take a vote. I'll take a roll call vote. Larry Boudreau.
Yes.
Lindsey Butler.
Yes.
Richard Wright.
Yes.
And Walt Meisner, yes. Thank you very much, John. Good luck to you. If you can send this materials over, we'll get this written up this weekend.
Fantastic. Thank you to the board very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. You're doing a lot of work to make this happen, so good luck to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
And Walt, thank you for your efforts and, in pursuing this and getting it followed through.
Yeah, well, I learned a lot. It was a good, good exercise for me and we do, we'll talk about it in our administrative process. But we're setting up a system with the Building Commissioner so that when someone like John comes in and raises the question, they'll be able to hand them a piece of paper with a checklist of things that they have to get done so that you know, future applicants don't have to go through three months of trying to figure it out what the heck we're trying to do here. So good luck to you, John. Okay, we can move on to, I have on the agenda Bray Average Ave Performance Fund Distribution. Is anybody representing Ed McSweeney here? I see that he's not, so that we don't have to address this right now.
Hello.
Hello. Oh, hi, Ed. I, good.
Unfortunately, I was only able to get access by a phone, but I
Okay.
I think I can answer whatever questions you have.
Okay, well, I, I don't know if, I have many questions. I will say I did, I, I wanted to find out, did Heather share with you or point out to you the clauses in the rules and regulations about us? About our, the final release of, you know, funds, I want to get the, I'm pulling it up now.
I think I can address some of those, but I'll be upfront with you. When we agreed to the passbook account, just as you had articulated for the gentleman that just completed about his road that he's doing to his new house. In the future, if there is a subdivision, and maybe it was there, but we didn't see it, a checkoff list, because we've, we had no issue putting the money in the funds. But over the past month and a half, I, I think I've visited everybody in the town hall, trying to figure out how to get the money released, so.
Well, I mean, there's two things that are required in our rules and regulations. One is as-built plans, and it says four-point-three-point-two-five on as-built. Upon completion of construction and before the release of the performance guarantee, the subdivider shall be prepared and submitted as-built plans as of the same scale as the street plans, which shall indicate the actual location of all of the following. And then it goes through a lot, boundaries and right-of-way, street lines, traveled edgeways, path locations, permanent monuments, obviously you don't have any there, location and inverts with the elevation of the required utilities and drainage. And it also says locations of any other underground utilities such as electricity, phone lines, street lighting, water and sewer mains, driveway locations, lot boundaries, centerline stationing, location of all buildings, wells and septic systems, and required landscape improvements, if there were any in your original thing. These as it says that the accuracy of such as-built plans shall be certified by a registered land surveyor or registered professional engineer retained by the subdivider. That's part one. Part two is is in an earlier section, conversion of this surety to a covenant. If the developer desires to, okay, I want to move down through here. Okay. Build, no building shall be granted, let me, street. It says here, requirements for final release and durability of required improvements, Ashburnham Planning Board subdivision rules and regulations. Revised September fourteenth, two thousand and six, no subdivision shall be accepted and no final release of performance guaranteed shall be given by the planning board until one, the integrity of the road pavement and drainage has been verified following a full winter in place. The planning board shall retain a surety in the sum of fifteen percent guaranteed, you know, percent of the total cost of the improvements, which shall be released following the verification that with, that utilities withstood the winter or have repaired to, or have been repaired to the planning board satisfaction and to any required planting areas. I don't think this is relevant to you. So the only thing I have to say, Ed, is that we're happy to try to release this, but those are the basic guidelines in which we have, you know, we have to have not only an assurance that we have the as-bills, but then we have to have the town meaning DPW, Fire, Police, Electric Company, all of those companies say, yes, those, those are the plans. We agree with them. He did them. We're done. And then we can release everything. So that's, that's my understanding of how we're supposed to behave in this matter.
And, and I can, and I appreciate that. Our understanding was slightly different when we had talked to the town attorney and so forth for the paving of what we set up the passbook. May I talk a little bit here and see if we can come to an agreement? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, go ahead and say what you want to say.
So right now, what we had agreed to, obviously, keep in mind, we inhabited the, the road. So the road was basically installed close to twelve years ago. And we had basically, when we took it over, we had videoed and the lines and so forth. So at that time, Steve Nims was the head of the Department of Public Works. And our engineers met with Steve Nims. He wanted to make sure there was integrity, that the hydrants were correctly installed and one of them was, one wasn't. He said, hey, you've got it, and the one towards William Street needed some work and we had agreed to fix it before we completed the project. Hey, we tested the sewer lines with video and plus pressure testing and the water lines and so forth. And then he said, nope. And the integrity of the baseline was good, the paving and so forth. There wasn't any excessive flooding or anything on the road and the drains all were working and so forth. We started to build the homes. Obviously, then, we had planned on, once we completed the house eight and nine, we were looking to pave the road because we wanted to make sure the heavy trucking was completed in the project. Due to all the rain we had this summer, that got a little delayed and then the supply chain issue was true because we had lined up PJ Albert to do the top coat paving. And unfortunately, his schedule wouldn't allow him to do the work. Keen had given us that quote. The bottom line, we finally was able to find Miller, which we're grateful, and he completed the paving, but it wasn't until the December timeframe. So what we'd like to do, there is sixty-four thousand dollars in the account, the passbook account. We'd like to request forty-four thousand to be released and issued to help pay for the invoice that we received from Miller for doing the paving. We have had Randy and Randy did talk to, I know, we thought we had to start with the Sluckman's office, so I know we talked to Mary up there and so forth. Mr. Williams has reviewed. He was satisfied with the play, the paving. He's satisfied with the, there was one hydrant, as I had mentioned, it need work. We did the repair to that and we put in the sidewalk and I, I was there when he was reviewing it and he said, no, it's good. We tested it for pressure and so forth and it was good. I also talked to both the police and the fire. I also talked to both the police and the fire and I know they've issued memos. I'm not sure if they were forwarded to you all, but they were forwarded to Heather that they feel that the Bray Ave can accommodate both any police and ambulance and fire trucks up and down the road without any issue. As far as the plans, we will. We're not asking to release it. We are, right now, we still have ownership of the road. We're responsible for this winter, for the following and so forth, which we're doing. Come the spring, the work that remains at Bray Ave is, there is two replication areas. Conservation has a ruling, after September, you're not able to plant any blueberry, they're going to be blueberry or raspberry bushes in the replication area. And due to the rain, we weren't able to complete that part of it. So come the spring, we still have a little bit of grass seeding to do when, next to the sidewalk area on two of the houses. The replication areas, we got to plant some blueberry bushes. One, we might not because now the engineer says, it's been there so long that Mother Nature's might have done the work for us, but we will be talking to Marshall and the conservation people. As far as physical work, we have to do on ten Bray Ave. We need to add three feet of widening his driveway. On eight Bray Ave, there's still a sidewalk that has to go from up along the side of his garage. We guaranteed him that we'll pave it. The paver wasn't able to get in there and do it because of the size of equipment when they paved the road. But we plan on then keeping twenty thousand in the account until we complete all the tasks. And as part of that task, Chris Mossman has been collecting the information. So it's our plan that we will be turning over to both the DPW and anyone else and probably will give to Heather a copy of a plan that not only shows, again, it's Hemway Engineering had done the original plan. The majority, we have kept to that scale and so forth. But a couple of the driveways of the houses, instead of using a common driveway, we used individual driveway. Each of the houses has a utility plan, so we will put that all together. And it shows exactly where the water lines and the sewer lines go in from the road to each house. So he has been, we have been measuring and he is collecting that information. Also, as we were building the houses, we were measuring in the location during a hand drawing and giving it to DPW. So in the DPW on the Bray Ave, each of the nine houses shows where the sewer line is and where the water line is in terms of how it enters the house and where it comes off the road and how long and how many feet and so forth. So we have been working on that, but Chris Mossman, like I said, once we have conservation sign off on the two replication areas, once we plant some seed and grass near where the sidewalk is, if you go in on the left side on number two, number four and number six Bray Ave, we'll get conservation to sign off. Chris will basically then have the formal plan. I'll be happy to come to the planning board, give you, show you a copy of the plan. And then we will formally then, if everyone's accepting, we will then go to the selectmen and ask them to put us on. I guess there has to be a public hearing on the agenda and see if we can have the town take ownership of the road.
Okay, I understand what you're, you're asking of us. I don't think we can act on this tonight because we would have to, all of what you just said, we, I wouldn't want to act on it unless I had it in writing. You know, this is what your promise is and this is what you'll do and, and the timing. It is, my understanding, though, there's a lot, you described for me quite a bit of work and, and holding twenty thousand dollars.
Well, this should be, if I can interrupt, Walter, an estimate, itemized estimate of the cost of each of the remaining items.
Yeah, yeah.
And then that's what would be retained and, and whatever is done.
So we would have to have something, we would have to have something formal from you to react to. There is a clause that says, hold on, let me go back here to this, that says, street acceptance. That for ways proposed to be offered to the town as public ways, the subdivider shall be prepared, shall have prepared and submitted a street acceptance plan prior to final release of the performance guarantee. Such plans shall be suitable for the recording in the registry of deeds. At a minimum, street acceptance plan shall contain the following information. And then there's a, a number of, including title block indicating the name of the subject village and the name of the way.
Oh, no, we're, we're aware of that. I know what that is and Chris Mossman is well aware of that and that's what we will be submitting in the spring. Once we, we know exactly what we need to finish, like I said.
Okay, okay.
Because of time constraints, we couldn't finish it with conservation because of the cutoff of the plantings. Obviously, we didn't get the paving done until December. Now, the roadway was, you know, Mr. Williams went up and down and he approved it and so forth. He had talked to people and I can get that in writing from him. And we, again, I'll be happy to itemize and put together and give you that information. That's not a problem.
If you can, if you can, if you can itemize all that, put that together in recommendation and, and, and put forth a formal recommendation of what you're asking the, the board to act on and release. And something that we can then, and give it to us in advance so that we can, I can share it with the board members and, and we can get some questions answered and stuff like that and we can share it with the town council. Then we'd be in a position to, to vote on that.
Not a problem. So I will cobble that together, if I may, for Heather. I'll use her again. I'll get it to her and then she can pass it on to you guys.
I did, I did, by the way, she did pass along the two emails from the chief of police into the fire. So I have those things. The more important stuff from our point of view is the, you know, the completion, it's something, the, the completion of the as-built plans. And then a validation by all of the people that those as-built plans have been, that work has been performed as indicated in those plans. And once we have that, then we're, then we're ready to go.
Nope, I'll get a statement from Chris Mossman to include in the information I give to Heather, saying that's a, that is a plan to give you a final plan that shows everything. Not, not a problem.
And any certifications of, you know, work that, that's complete and you want the release for.
Yes.
You know, inspection reports or whatever Chris has prepared, you know, saying what's done and saying that it's acceptable.
Right, the, the utility plans and more or less, let me talk to him, let me give it to Heather. I have two weeks before the next board meeting. So we'll get stuff passed to you, if I may, Walt, and then if you think there's still some more holes, let us know and we'll run around and get that for you.
That would be good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you folks. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Okay. All right, then we can move on now to Cushing Academy. Peer review proposals. Brian is on, I see. Brian, I can validate that the town looked at all the proposals and the town has no objections to any of the proposed engineers. So we can, that's one question. I want to, I would have the obvious, his preference or Cushing Academy presented, ranked them in order of their preference with McCarthy Associates being the first preference and the Graves Engineering be the second preferences. The other two were tie and bond and Weston and Sampson. Weston and Sampson was their third choice and Ty and Bond was their fourth choice. That is fine with the town. The only thing that I think we probably need to talk about is to make sure there's clarity on the scope. The one thing I would say about the Graves Engineering proposal, the Graves Engineering proposal was a little bit more, you know, detailed in terms of the scope. Where the McCarthy proposal did not detail out the scope other than to say, just do, you know, a site review. So I would only want to make sure, Brian, that if we go with McCarthy Associates or that if you go with McCarthy Associates, we get a little bit more, we request a little bit more detail as to what's in that scope to make sure it aligns with what the town most wants to see. I thought the Graves Engineering scope outline was pretty complete and I will share my screen and put that up.
While you're doing that, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Who, who is talking, please?
This was Brian Malisi from Whitman and Bigum.
Good, thank you.
And I do believe, I do believe we have Sean Donnelly. I know Ed Kirk from Cushing Academy is on the phone and Dick Sella typically attends. I didn't see his name, but he may be in the audience as well.
Okay, what, you all are not seeing the document, I imagine. Because it looks like it's only sharing my.
I got it. Oh, you don't have it anymore.
Oh, so you did see this doc, document.
I did have it and then it just went away, but it looks like it's coming back up again.
Are you seeing the document now? I have the. Document. I'm only bringing the Graves Engineering document up because of the way they articulated the scope. Sure. Where the document for this one, McCarthy, as folks can see, was a little, you know, a little less detailed. But we want to make sure that the scope of the peer review is comprehensive. And that, I think, is our only concern. The town will accept any of your, any of your recommendations, so there's no issue there. We just want to make sure that the site plan review covers all of the important points. Why I put this, that's why I had the graves up there, only because they, they went down, you know, conduct a reconnaissance site visit to become familiar with it. That's clear. Both would do that. Review and propose to site access, site layout, parking, whatever. Review construction details and drawing notes. I would care very much about, you know, making sure that it's passing all code requirements. Review pre and post-doc development, the lineage drainage areas, whatever. It's all just pretty well articulated there. So are you? We have no experience working with McCarthy Engineering before. So that's my main question. How can we just make sure our scopes are aligned?
That's a good question. I suppose we could do one, one of a couple of things. I mean, we could, I could reach out to the principal at McCarthy Associates and kind of have him send us an email to make sure that, that he's going to do these things and make sure that that his, his price proposal does include those items. You know, or we can, or we can try to decide tonight on, on whom to go.
We can definitely decide tonight on whom to go because it's, it doesn't, it, that's, that's really not the issue. I, I mean, obviously, we want to have that conversation with McCarthy before we talk to any of the ones.
Okay.
The other people, because we want to make sure we have, we, we're, we're, we're fully aligned on the scope and the expectations of the selected engineer before we tell the other engineers whom has selected, because if, you know, after that conversation with McCarthy, we could decide that, you know, he, he might decide that he doesn't want to do it, you know, or.
Correct, or, or he doubles his price, right.
That's right, yeah. So, and then, and then, and then you have, you have leeway to be able to do it. But the important thing is the town will accept any of them. And so it is your choice and it's your money ultimately anyway. It's the per, the site review is engaged by the town. But Cushing will reimburse the town for that money. And we go from there.
So if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I think what I'd like to do is have a conversation, if it's, if it's okay for me to reach out to these guys.
It sure is.
Because the, the other issue, if you remember, was we kind of want to pick somebody, but then not release them right away, you know, until those, until those plan revisions have either come or, or we know there aren't any.
And that's a very good point. That's a very good point because that itself may be a reason why McCarthy would not choose to do it. They may say, oh, that's not going to fit with my schedule. And then you have the ability to talk to Graves and, 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 and move that on and go, go on down the line as far as that's.
Yeah, exactly. So what I'd like to do is, first thing tomorrow morning, I'd start with McCarthy. And then, and then go to Graves, write down our list there and, and report, obviously, report back to you and the board as to, as to, you know, those conversations. And then, then we can, we could say, okay, we, we would agree to, you know, putting such and such, fill in the blank, under, under retainer to get them going, so.
Yeah, I don't believe this requires a board vote, by the way. I think it's just that, it, it's just consultation with the board.
Okay.
On this. So this, this is not a matter there. It's just, we want to make sure the site review process is and the town is happy with who's been engaged. And, and like I said, the town is ready to engage. Gauge this once it's clear. And my only concern is making sure the scopes are aligned.
Perfect.
Okay, I, I want to go through my colleagues, make sure they don't have any questions. Larry, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Okay. Lindsey, do you have any questions or comments?
I do not.
Okay, Richard? Richard, I think you might be unmute.
I'm good.
Okay, and Roger, and you have any comments? Do you have any? I mean, Roger's the one that's been through this before, so.
Uh, nope, I don't have any comments. I guess we'll do the typical fifty-three G account that just gets replenished as the funds are taken out.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not, I have to learn a little bit more on how the fifty-three G account.
Heather and Donna and the town are well experienced in that, I believe, so.
All right, that's good for me. So I think we're all set here, Brian.
What I'll do is, like I said, I'll reach out to the, the first two. I'll report through email, if that's okay with you, Walt. Just the findings or the conversations that we had, just to kind of keep you abreast of what we've been doing. And then we'll go from there.
I, I see Sean's on. Do you have anything to add, Sean?
I'm good on my end. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
So the, the only thing, Mr. Chairman, I'd be remiss to ask, I know when we first met the board to go over this thing, the idea was thrown out about maybe waiving the pay-per-view. Was that still on the table?
I don't know how we do that. Can we do?
Well, I think you can't, did you, he'd have to submit like a formal request to and.
Yeah, we have to have something formal to act on. And, and I'd have to refer that with, you know, with, to be honest, Brian, I, I would, I would be hesitant to do that, but it is, you're, you are on a closed campus. We have done this before. There's, you know, there's, I, I, I wouldn't know why we would want to waive that, but Roger, what do you think?
I suppose if, if there was a, a good explanation of why, you know, I kind of have gone on in the past that, you know, you're long-term owners. It's in your best interest to do it, right? We're really, we're really concerned that affects the town and the town systems.
No, point taken. I just like, kind of be, be remiss if I didn't ask. I know it was brought up at the very, at the first meeting, so.
Yeah, that's, that's true. I, I'd forgotten about that. I'm glad you did bring it up.
And again, I'd say if there's things in the scope that may not be necessary, the board could consider that. May not be necessary, the board could consider that.
Yeah. Uh, we would definitely have to have a formal request and the, the request in order to act on it would have to be. Uh, well argued. Okay, on your behalf and well presented. Why do you don't think this needs it? I think Roger just gave you one reason by saying you're a long-term, term owner of the town and. And it's to your best interest to make sure this is done right. It's, it's not like this is a property that. You're going to be here for the, you know, Cushing Academy is likely to be here for the next two hundred years. So. Um, it's, um, it, it's, it's not as of a concern to the town as it would be with. Another business or owner, so.
Great. Well, I appreciate the, appreciate the banter back and forth. Uh, I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't ask. It was in my notes. So I will, uh, continue on what we explained about before. I'll reach out to, uh, McCarthy and Graves tomorrow morning. I can report back to the board, uh, through you Walt and Heather through email. And we'll, we'll just continue the process, so.
I, 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 the only thing I would add, Brian, is, um, where the benefit is to you. Even as a long-term owner in the town of peer review is in, uh, in my experiences in other situations. Um, more of my business situation. Um, peer review is often, um. We've learned from it and it's made the project better, uh, for us. So even as an owner who has had peer reviewed done on our properties. Um, we generally, the architect and the project team. Um, makes, is able to make the project better by peer review. Because they point out things or you learn things from it. So that's. It's relatively small dollars and it may be worth it from that point of view.
But it is a point.
We don't have any, let me jump in. We don't have any objection to appear. So.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sure you don't. I'm sure you don't. I'm just saying for us to overrule it, there's going to be a fair amount of work in you presenting the argument. For us to not do it. So you can do it, but it's your choice.
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank, thank you all.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Board, have a good night and, uh, we'll, uh, continue on the process.
Fantastic. Thank you, Brian.
Yep, have a great night.
Good night. Thank you. Um, we have here now, um. We have, um. Moved to public comment. I only see one other person from the public here, um. Eric Kirk, uh, Edward Kirk. He's off. He must have been with Cushing. So we have nobody from public, so. You know, we just hit the jackpot team. So we, we can, we can wrap this up, I think, pretty quickly. Um. You know, I don't know what's going on, uh, Roger, but I didn't, I reached out to Jennifer three times. She hasn't responded to me. Uh, we had talked about her joining this meeting to continue our discussion from last time. Um. I haven't heard from her, uh, at the last meeting. You'll all remember she promised us, um. A copy of the slide deck that she was unable to show us and we never got that slide deck. I asked for that slide deck. So, um. Uh, I'm a little disappointed in all of that, but that's, there's nothing to really report on that.
I can follow up with Karen on that.
If you would, that would be, um, uh, I'd be grateful for that, uh, Roger. Um, with regards to the private road acceptance requirements. Um, we, uh, we defer, uh, we delayed that a little bit. We had a conversation about it when we were talking about Lake Haven Road. Um, using Lake Haven Road as an example, uh, Deb Phillips did, um. Uh, draft up sort of a form and, uh, you know, that, um, Sarah. And Heather are going to work on trying to improve. But eventually we'll come up with a process and a form and a checkoff procedure. For when that situation comes up again before it even comes to us. They won't even bother coming to us with the request to, uh, vote on the road. You know, whether it's a great road or not, it doesn't matter the condition of the road. Every, every private road that has frontage. That property that has frontage on a private road will, when they want a building permit. We have to validate that it's, it's, uh, has accessibility to it. Adequate accessibility to it and that's pretty clearly in the bylaws. So, um, but we're going to come up with a process. It's a little cleaner. So the Lake Haven. Um, lane issue doesn't happen again. I have nothing to report on Whitney Park. Um, and, uh, nothing new to really report on the W District bylaw change. Except that the biro law review committee is kind of transitions into the next agenda item. Uh, did meet, uh, we did go through some of the chapters, um. You know, just to make notes and everything. Right now, general code is codifying our bylaws and we should. Uh, very shortly see a draft of that codification and, uh, that. The idea is, is that at the town meeting in April, we will take. A new codification of the bylaws, which is, we'll have, but there will be. We're looking at a few of the low-hanging fruit in the bylaws. That can easily be corrected. At the town meeting and one of them is the, um, W District. Uh, bylaw change, which right now is in Deb Phillips' hands. Um, the wording of that. So that's where we are on that. Um. Member reports of other boards and committees. Rogers, do you want to give us an MRPC, MJTC and the capital planning report?
So I don't think we had an MJTC meeting since. The last meeting, but, uh. The DLTA. Request for services application came out this week, um. The two rounds are March first and April fourth. Um, there is a possibility to get the funding for the, uh, MBTA communities. But also I think I forwarded back to you again, Walt, what Karen had sent us, I think in a couple of months ago about the outline of how to complete the master plan.
Yeah.
So the suggestions in there about what, uh, aspects we could do through DLTA, so. Um, just around the board deciding. And with the board of selectmen on how to go about what we should ask for.
Yeah, yeah.
Got time in February to get that accomplished, we could make a March first application. I think I did attend the webinar on the MBTA communities. I think Bill Johnson was also in attendance, so. He's been up, up to speed too on, uh, where that stance is opportunity for comment period. Whether the board wants to submit comments, whether the select board wants to accumulate them and insert one set of comments. Um, it's just for, for us and them to figure out in Brian, how to go about it. I have started a list of my own, which I can share when the time comes if we want to do that.
Well, you're the more, you're the person most on top of, so. Uh, I think.
It would be interesting to see how other towns such as Ashby, Townsend, Princeton. The rural towns are feeling about this. Whereas it's such a. Overwhelming amount. And it's, there's no, at least this point, there aren't any timeframes set, set out for. Um. You know, spreading it out in the town, being able to accommodate it if it happened right away. Unlikely. It's paper, not bricks. There's no money involved. There's no incentive. But also as to how the town wants to go about it. Um, I think that's it. We had a capital planning meeting with Westminster mostly discuss the school districts capital items.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'm pretty sure I know that there's been nothing on complete streets, right, Larry? And I think I know, Richard, there's nothing on economic development.
I've been off that board for like six months, so.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, we actually, uh, I, I, I will try to between now and the next meeting. Find out, um, what the future of economic development is. Cause, uh, knowing that you're going off the board, Richard, we probably, we definitely should have a representative. Representation on that board. So we should sort of talk about that, but I want to learn a little bit more about, um. How things are rolling with economic development at this particular time. Um, MRT Committee on the Marijuana View, I have nothing to report, the meeting that, the committee has not met. However, I did hear, um. Um, through the grapevine, uh, at the last minute that apparently last night. Um, the, um, Eddie's Flowers. Um, shop that's supposed to go up on the corner of one nineteen and one oh one. Uh, had another sort of, uh, community meeting last night that was not well-publicized. Nobody knew about it. And the few people who did witnessed it, um. The, um, reaction to the presentation was, um, not favorable. Uh, meaning, you know, well, very disorganized, um, not well-presented at all. And, um, not, um. Um, sloppily done, which was similar to the one community meeting I went with. With Eddie's Flowers, which has me personally, uh, we're probably too far into it. Because they already bought the property. They're already making the changes. They're already installing it up there. Uh, the, the trains already left the station, but, um, it's, um. The fact that they were unaware of competing, uh, marijuana distribution shops. In, in Winchton and in other areas, uh, doesn't give you a lot of confidence that they've done the. Proper marketing research to have a successful business. But, um, uh, that's not good news and probably something that shouldn't be. Um, you know, sort of publicly discussed, but I'm doing it here on this planning board meeting because this is a public meeting. Um, but we'll, we'll see how, uh, it comes together.
Have they started to do anything on site or?
I have not been up there. Has anybody been by one oh one and?
I haven't seen anything, you know, but that was.
Yeah, Steve Coswell was one of the people on the, on the meeting last night and I was hoping he would be here. I'm sorry. Uh, he had difficulty getting on, uh, because I would like to have gotten his reaction because he lives up in that area. And I think it's, uh, he has probably a good handle on how his neighbors are feeling about it. Uh, bylaw review committee I mentioned, and we're back. We're, uh, back on track with that. Um. No, I got nothing from Heather on town notices, so there's nothing there. Um, and we have, um, um, Lindsay sent, uh, two. Uh, meetings that we have to vote on for minutes to be approved. I've gone over them. Has everyone else been able to go over them? Richard?
Yep.
Okay, Larry's okay. Lindsay obviously is okay. Um, let's start with, uh, the December eighth meeting, uh, twenty twenty-one. Anyone have any comments with regards to those minutes? I have no, I have no edifications to offer. Uh, it's been, it's been moved and seconded to approve those minutes. All the, um, roll call vote, Larry Butrow.
Yes.
Uh, Lindsey Butler.
Yes.
Uh, Richard Wright.
Yes.
Walt Meisner, yes. Um, and then we have, uh, approval of the minutes from January twelfth. Um, I have no edifications to offer. Does anyone else?
None whatsoever.
Uh, so moved. So moved and seconded, uh, any further discussion, comments? Roll call vote, Larry Boudreau.
Yep.
Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
Richard Wright.
Yes.
And Walt Meisner, yes. Uh, thank you, Lindsay.
Um, thank you, Lindsay.
I thought the, um, the minutes from the twelfth were, you know, that was, we had quite a lot in there and, and you, um. You, you captured it in a succinct way. So, thank you. Um, I also noticed when you sent it, when you sent the eleven ten. I went online because I thought they had been posted. They had not been posted. I also noticed that October thirteenth had not been posted. Online, so I will take care of that tomorrow and make sure that they're all posted, but they've all been voted on and approved already, so. We don't need to do anything else. Um, the next meeting is February ninth. I have no idea whether that will be a remote meeting or in person yet. Uh, I suspect that there's a, a good chance we might be going remote for another month. But I have no basis to do that other than just a gut feeling. Uh, but we'll, we'll see how that unfolds in the next week or so. Personally. I think these meetings work pretty well remotely.
Um, especially in the winter.
Yeah, particularly in the winter.
I totally agree.
Uh, I do think that there, we do have one person on our board who doesn't agree and that's Steve Coswell. Cause he's about, probably about ready to throw his computer out the window right now.
I have the same problem.
So, um, so with that said, I have nothing more. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No more.
It's been moved. Do I have a second? Everybody's rushing to be the second person, so. So, uh, it's been moved and seconded, roll call vote, uh, Larry Boudreau.
Yes, please.
Lindsay Butler.
Yes.
Richard Wright.
Yes.
And Walt Meisner, yes. And thank you, Roger, for once again being our, uh. Our resource and our aid. Thank you. Everybody have a great.
Folks.
Have a good.
Night, everybody.
Bye.